Mr. Green, District 4. Mr. Mann, District 5.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District 6.
Here.
Ms. Prueby, at large.
Here.
We just have a forum. With that, next item is to approve the agenda as presented to you, to be amended or anything, or as is, Ms. Barnes?
We need to remove the update from Economic Development that we'll be presenting next month.
With that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I make the motion, Mr. Jeter.
All right. Ms. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Prueby's second. Any discussion? On fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is approved to amend from April 7, 2021. Hope you had a chance to look at it. With that, we need a motion to approve the amendment from that meeting one month ago.
Still moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who's second?
Tipton.
Mr. Tipton's second. On fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is citizens' expression period, and I read this little short statement here. Citizens' expression period is the point of the meeting, and anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state where you're from, and for whatever station you represent, the board mayor may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we do have a couple of people, and we're going to recognize them. Students here from Scott County in a few minutes, that'll all be part of citizens' expression until we get into that issue here shortly. We just ask that you take turns and speak to business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. So with that, we are in citizens' expression period, and the first thing we want to do, I've asked Mr. Harren to present Ms. Natalie White a plaque, so, Ms. White here. You can come forward, please. The reason I asked Jeremy, Twin Springs is in his district, and so I would scoot to Twin Springs, I'd love to done, but it is their district, so, Jeremy.
Natalie won state championship, you know, for State of Virginia in forensics. You know, it's been a rough year, you know, the hard work for all of our academic athletes and our regular athletes, you know, it's been a rough year on all of them, but very proud of her, and we'd like to present you this plaque for your accomplishment.
Well, thank you. I love it.
All right. To do that, so you kids, I'm so impressed with you, and the Gate City team is here too for theirs, and I've asked our vice chair, Ms. Prueby, if she would present that, and Mike Ricky would normally do that, but he's not here, so I asked to establish she's in vice chair position to do that, so, Ms. Jeter.
A few folks from the academic team from Gate City, you want to come up here?
We really pride you all for the minutes, just wonderful to have these happening right here in Scott County, so we were blessed to have you as part of learning experience here in Scott County.
Wow, what a fantastic accomplishment you guys did, especially given the year you have, and we are so proud of you here in Scott County. You represent us really, really well. So this is presented to the Gate City academic team for your 2021 Virginia High School League II Scholastic Bowl. State champions. That's amazing. There you go. I'm going to wave this here, and then, don't you hold that. You guys want to...
Go around. Go around. Not everybody can be in the back row.
No. Somebody come up here and stand beside him, you'll be okay. I've been vaccinated.
Right here where I can see. That's good. All right. Everybody go around and smile, even though you're wearing a mask, we know you're smiling. One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three. Thank you.
Give another hand.
Anybody else's family want to take a picture while we're here? Now we're good? We're good?
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Way to go. Do you guys want to give, do you want your...
Thank you all so much.
Good job.
Thank you all.
Sometimes we on the board get to do some fun things, and that's one of the do that, and we started that a few years ago with recognizing any ones in our schools that might achieve that, so, I mean, the academic team, forensic team, that's just really, really something. I don't know what the competition was like, but I said it was tough, and so for them to do that, and especially academics and in forensics too, I could say that's really major accomplishment in their lives, and it'll help us to go forward, all right. All right, we're through with that, and anyway, next item, Karen Larson, is she here?
Yes.
Say, if you would, come forward, please. And she had signed up to speak, yeah?
Yes. Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Karen Larson. My husband Gary and I bought property on Mineral Hill Lane in Gate City five years ago. In September of 2020, we permanently moved here in our building of residence. We travel Mineral Hill Lane often, as do our neighbors, 12 families and two hunting folks. Many delivery trucks, FedEx, UPS, mail person, and school buses travel on Mineral Hill Lane. We have noticed that there's wear on the bridge, and it is very concerning because of the safety of everyone who travels that bridge. One issue that is impacting the safety is the significantly reduced weight limit on that bridge now. We have noticed stones crumbling on the left lane going across the bridge away from Route 71. Wood is now exposed. It is coming through the stone surface in several places. On the left side of the bridge going towards 71, the bridge is worn completely through and exposing layers of the bridge. I have pictures. Can I show, can I distribute the pictures? My question is, will there be repair or replacement planning for the future for this bridge?
What string does that bridge cross?
Little Marcus and Creek. I'll just pass them off for your attention, and I appreciate anything that you can do to help with this bridge situation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have some VDOT folks here may address this a little bit later, so we'll see what happens with it. Thank you for coming.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Bob, I think you're next, so, yeah, come on, my bad.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bob Etherington. I live on Gillenwater Chapel Road in Nicholsville. I'm here representing myself and my neighbors. If I may hand these out, these are signatures from the neighbors on Gillenwater Chapel. About two years ago, I was very pleased to see that Gillenwater Chapel had been approved to be paved, and so I called VDOT to try to get the idea of when and where and so forth, and the gentleman in research in my question said, "Well, sir, your portion of Gillenwater Chapel is not even on the list to be paved." So it was surprising to me. Gillenwater Chapel is a connecting road that connects Bethel Road with Long Hollow Road and also McConnell Road, which are all three paves. But what was surprising to me was the area that is to be paved on Gillenwater Chapel is between Marsh and Bethel, which has about three homes. If the same distance was taken to the left, which would also hook up with McConnell Hollow, which is paved, it would have affected 10 homes, and I just am not sure what the reasoning or what the thinking was of how the roads are chosen to be paved. Now, as some of you know, I used to be at a lot of these meetings over the years, and I recall the days when there was very little money to be paving, and a lot of the paving, the six-year plan was kicked forward and kicked forward and kicked forward. My suspicions are that the plan that was created 25 or 30 years ago is still in place, and what I would encourage you to do is to reevaluate what you're approving. In our area of Gillenwater Chapel, in the last 15 years, there's been several homes added to the road, so now we're at basically 10 homes and a half a mile stretch. And as you can see, pretty much everybody has signed a petition, a few people I couldn't get to. I would encourage you to reevaluate that. We, as a community, would like you to add Gillenwater Chapel to the paved list. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'm in the 4-H group.
How's it going? All right, so...
All right. I'm sorry, confused with students, so...
No, it happened.
I got straightened out, holding on, but she said she gets in trouble sometimes with the press, will they get her for it in the hallway, so she's not...
Out of the signed area? That's happened to me before when I was in high school, so, yep. All right, so for those of you that don't know me, I am Kasefer Monty. I'm the Scott County 4-H agent, and I have been for the past five, going on six years. During my time here in the 4-H program, it has been tremendously supported with the Board of Supervisors being one of the largest financial supporters, and so I'm really grateful for that. And this predates, the support for 4-H predates me, so I think that that really speaks for the organization and the impact that the organization has, no matter who's filling the position of the agent. So today, I brought with me four out of seven graduating seniors that have went through 4-H program since third or fourth grade. I want you all to see the seeds that your support has planted and groomed. Out of the seven graduating seniors, five of them are submitting their 4-H All-Star application, which is the highest recognition in 4-H. All four of these standing here behind me, they will all be submitting their application this year, and if it's accepted, this honor comes with more than a certificate, they are inducted into an elite group of individuals and are eligible to receive financial scholarships for college as well as other opportunities throughout their lifetime. This honor makes them a permanent 4-Her. I'm going to step aside and let these youth kind of like share their 4-H story and explain what opportunities you all have provided them with your support, so.
Hello, my name is Anna Grace Fraley, and I'm a senior at Gate City. I've participated in 4-H for about 10 years. 4-H has helped me develop into the person I am today. My cooperation, teamwork, and leadership skills all developed strongly because of this program. 4-H Camp, 4-H Day at the Capital, and the Scott County 4-H Team Club are just some of the many activities I've undertaken. All of these activities and more have allowed me to be able to apply to be a 4-H All-Star, which is a big deal. I wanted to thank you all for your part in funding the program that helped me learn who I really am. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning and hello, everybody. My name is Megan Cooper. I'm a senior at Gate City, and I've been involved in 4-H for about nine years now. This organization has created so many opportunities for not only me, but all of my fellow seniors standing with me today. All of us will be graduating in two short weeks, but now more than ever, I feel prepared because of the important life lessons I've learned through this organization. I never would have imagined not so long ago I'd be standing here speaking about how much 4-H means to me and how much it's changed my life. Starting at a young age, I was involved in various 4-H activities like 4-H Lego Robotics, 4-H Junior Summer Camp, and 4-H Day at the Capital, even now leading up to being a teen at camp and participating in 4-H Congress on Virginia Tech's campus. Thank you all so much for giving 4-H your time and effort and allowing others just like me to become something great. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Emily Jarrell, and I'm a graduating senior from Rycooke High School. I want to start by saying thank you to each and every one of you for your continued support of the Scott County 4-H program. I have been actively involved in 4-H since I was in third grade. Being active as a teen leader in both our long 4-H camp as well as our shorter day camp has given me responsibility, communication, and leadership skills that I have been able to use in school as drum major and president of our band, as well as in the workplace and community service. These skills are why I feel comfortable pursuing leadership positions during my time at University of Tennessee starting this fall. Thank you again for supporting us and continuing to help new generations of leaders grow in our community.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Natasha Colville. I'm a graduating senior of Twin Springs High School. I've been with the 4-H group since I was young, and it's given me a lot of opportunities. I've been able to participate in everything from showing lamps to public speaking and being the 4-H team counselor. These opportunities have taught me leadership skills, communication, and they've helped me find more confidence in myself, and I'd like to thank you all for supporting this group that teaches such valuable skills to people like myself.
Thank you.
So thank you all again. Thank you for giving us a chance to kind of share that, because it's not, I mean, I'm one small part of it, but you all continuing to support the program does grow these wonderful leaders, so, thank you.
Give them a hand. When they came in, and I thought they were asking for mine, they said, "No, we come to thank you for what you've earned." Usually, people come in, we need something, but they came to get it, to get things, so appreciate you all coming, and God bless you and what you do.
Very impressive group. I was impressed with the speeches.
What future leaders, they'll be right here one day, so that's what I look at, you know, they're being mentored by the right people, and so they will, if they're leaders coming up behind us, so, thank God for them. All right, anyone else wishing to speak, there's citizens' expression. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Mike Deal, I'm with Clint River Traffic Service, and I'm out of Nicholsville, Virginia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity to share with you. I realize you have many things to discuss this morning, so I'll try to keep this brief. I'm here in response to the last month's meeting when the board overturned their decision to grant CRTS a maximum tipping fee of $2,000. Frankly, this decision was disappointing to me, as well as confusing. When I was here in March, I seen the board saw the value of our company and the current and future impact that we have on the county, and this was very exciting to me and empowering. And since I'm literally convinced of the value that we bring to the community, I'm here to ask the board to reconsider and reinstate the maximum tipping fee of $2,000 to Clint River Traffic Service. I realize we're a small company, and the impact we currently make overall is seemingly minimal in comparison. However, my hope is that the board would see the future potential of our company and the benefit it could be to the county as CRTS progressively assumes the weight of managing its residents' waste. In just the past two months, our client base has grown by 25%. Last month, we hauled 30,600 pounds. That was an increase of 10,360 pounds in a single month. I highlight this to emphasize what our impact could be a year from now, or even five years from now. For every ton of garbage we haul and assume the expense that goes with it, the county doesn't have to worry about it. We literally can deliver it to your doorstep. CRTS is striving to be a business that supports its community, something that is becoming increasingly rare nowadays. Not only is this demonstrated in the very nature of our service, especially as it relates to our customers who literally need our service, but also to our involvement in the overall community as well. Last month, we had the privilege to participate in the Nicholsville Clean-Up Day. Not only did we assist in picking up the litter around Nicholsville, but I had the privilege to haul the bag litter that our residents picked up to the transfer station. I show this not for a pat on the back, but to simply help the board see our heart in serving our community. My request is not about simply saving money, it's about being enabled to serve our community and its residents, especially those who truly need our services. I understand there are some concerns regarding the legality of our requests. All I can say is that there's not another company striving to do what we're doing. We are community-focused, we're serving rural Scott County, we are driving miles upon miles down the back in dirt roads to get to the elderly, the disabled, the single mom, or just the guy who would rather not go to the dump on Saturday. I believe it is pretty easy to distinguish us from an ordinary waste management company, and while the county would be justified in granting us this request, if the board would reconsider capping our tipping fee at $2,000, it would enable us to more aggressively work to take on and serve Scott County residents. For this reason, I'm requesting the board reinstate the maximum tipping fee of $2,000.
Thanks, sir. Any comments or questions for Mr. Deal?
Thank you.
We'll discuss when we come out of citizens' expression.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? No? Come out of citizens' expression period. Couple of things we need to talk about, and one, Ms. Larson coming up that bridge, and the VDOT folks are here, they've heard what you're saying, they'll be here in a few minutes, we got a public hearing with them in a few minutes, so just hang around, we'll let them discuss that. You got a few minutes if you don't mind. Mr. Etherston was here about Gillenwater Chapel Road, about the six-year plan. We decided that in the last meeting, the roads that we felt, we actually voted on it, which was, I think, the Democratic way to decide which ones would be added to that, and so there could be another round coming next year when we do the '26, '27 fiscal year as forward as the six-year plan. And what happened back, there was time and heat to even reference that, when there was zero, lived to zero funding for any of the paving. And so we had 34 roads on that, and they all came off, and then we started adding them back as we got funds available, so now we're able to add some to that that we weren't able to do before. So we voted on it, which ones to add, and this one did not make the list, maybe next time it will, and I know that, I mean, you got almost 300 miles of unpaid roads in our county, and it's tough to try to be fair about it, and I know everybody wants their road paved. So anyway, Jeremy, your district, you want to say anything about this?
Well, it's, you know, it's partially paved, you know, and I've questioned this before, why we have to, you know, not, once we start one, why not go ahead and pave the whole thing? The one, of course, I've talked with Mr. Etherston, you know, the one I had, you know, that I brought to the board was Snowflake Road. Of course, it didn't make the cut either, but if I'm understanding Jackie right, we might be able to put that one on next year and continue as long as the money is there, as long as Richmond doesn't cut the money. So hopefully, you know, this means a lot, I think, you know, that's how I chose which road to pick, you know, we had a lot of complaints with Snowflake Road, so that's, you know, that was how I chose it, and how I voted was how many vehicles traveled that road. You know, I put those roads in order, you know, it just so happened that Snowflake Road had the most, but the way it turned out, we didn't make the list, so hopefully, that one may be able to be put on next year, and then maybe we can continue that through the following years. So hopefully, let's see, if we do put the ones on that didn't make the cut, if we do, that's for 2027, is that right, Jackie? So maybe for 2028, would that be right too? Or if we add more, as long as the money's there. It seems like that's a, I didn't realize it had been so long since we had, you all even hadn't been able to put a road on there because the money wasn't, you've been on the board for...
50,000, what?
Yeah, and I didn't realize that, that's, you know, so, it's sort of a, well, it's especially new for us, new ones, and it's even new for the ones that's been on the board. So hopefully, as long as the money comes, you know, from Richmond, hopefully, we can see some big changes in the next few years.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
What is the criteria for putting roads on the list?
We looked at everything on it, we had a list, go by it, and we rated them, one through seven, I think, we rated them through, and that's the way we did it, and everybody decided which road, and so we took the, well, we had a little million dollars just being, so we tried to keep them within that confinement of that amount, and so those roads are selected that could be done with the amount of money that's coming.
Okay, I guess my concern is, Mr. Harren mentioned traffic count. I've been there 15 years. I don't think you've had a traffic count at least 10 years or more on the road, so the data you're looking at, I don't know how little it is, it's got to be at least 10 years, maybe more, so maybe some of that stuff should be re-done to see what...
It can be, and we can request a traffic count, and Jackie and I'm here to tell you that we can do that, so, anyway.
I don't know the exact thing, but they, some are traffic counts all back to 10 years, you know. I mean, we've added five houses in our half a mile within that timeframe, so you're making a decision, and you're doing it correctly, but you're using data that isn't current.
They could be wrong. You could be wrong.
Well, how that I've chose my roads, actually, I have an ongoing list. If residents in District 6 contact me about paving their road, I put them on the list. The first ones who contacted me, they got put on the current list, and then I have a couple more on my list that the next time we suggest roads, I'll suggest them. I just go by what people ask me to do. That's how I choose my roads.
Ironically, I, the previous board, I made that request, and I was told by the supervisor at that time that he had no say in it, so...
At the time, it isn't, that's the first time we've ever done that, so he told you correctly. We were putting roads back on that came off, there was 34 of them, and they went back on as they came off, and so we didn't have any say. The previous board, even before I was on here, had that list, and so he told you correctly, but now this is the first time we've ever had a chance to do that.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Glad you came. And people need to know this, and, you know, and I, you know, it's just, I wish we'd get them all paved. And the one thing that's really helped us, where they had this real rustic road now designation, and we can do more miles for less money, and it's, they're not having to do as much drainage, site clearance, rideaway, all this stuff, they're not having to do as much if they do real rustic. It's a lot cheaper, and you get more done for the dollars we have. So on that part, we're blessed that we can do that, and VDOT has come up with that some years ago, the real rustic program. Basically, what they do is they fix the road, get what's payable and pave it, and they don't do all the other stuff that would normally be required. So anyways, to save the money, it's admirable roads do less money. And even had, I had a previous supervisor that from District 5 ask me about what they were doing then compared to what we do now, but they had a lot more money then. I mean, there was lots of money coming in during that time from Richmond or from VDOT to do these things, and just not there now. We went some months with zero, or some years, zero dollars, and had been, so we got a little over a million dollars this year to do this stuff with. Anyway, anything else before we go to the next item?
Yeah, one thing. Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, but Jeremy said his road didn't make the cut, it didn't make the cut this time, but it'll still be on the list, right? It's still...
It's on there. It's not on the plan.
Yeah.
It's on your list.
In other words, when these four or five gets done, it'll be the next one moved up or...
We'll decide that, I would say, it's like we did this last time. We'll do it, yeah.
Thank you.
Should we have a public hearing before that happens, that give us a chance to speak to the board, and there may be things that they're not aware of, you know, and hopefully we can get new data to look at. I mean, a lot of stuff has changed in the Nicholsville area, there are a lot more residents, so I think you need to get up to date.
What can happen with that is not a public hearing, but we can advertise it because it's not a required public hearing, but, you know, when we have these, we can advertise it to, you know, get people to come and speak their mind, because that's what this is about, come through those doors and tell us what they need or what they want.
I might suggest that my list of folks have to work, so they couldn't be here today, or they couldn't enter. So an evening meeting might be appropriate.
We could do that, too.
Specifically roads.
We could do that.
Thank you.
All right. The next thing I have down here is Mr. Deal here from Clint River Traffic Services, and what happened in March, and I kind of done something, I did it in a way I shouldn't have done, is we should have taken under advisement before we made any decision in a meeting. Then we looked at the legalities of what we were proposing. I was 100% on board with giving this $2,000 max charge to Clint River Traffic Service, and so I should have not let it come to a vote, we shouldn't even, we should have taken under advisement, let our county attorney look at it, and so we looked at that resolution, I think it's done 2009, Ms. Kegley, that was where that ordinance was put in place, 2009. And the way it is put in place, it's like picking winners and losers, and so we cannot just pick out a business and give them advantage. Now, what he said, there's no other, nobody can pick with him right now to do that, and there's not, but for us to pick out a certain business and give them a break on it, and we look at the legalities of it, and legally... and we look at the legalities of it, and legally, we can't do that the way that the ordinance was put in place in 2009. And so, and I know I misled you, Mr. Deal, told you, I thought we could, we even decided to do that. But as chairman, I should have never, we should have never went that far with that day. We should have let Ms. Kegley look at it, break it down, tell us the do's and don'ts, then brought it back, and we committed the decision in April. I know you left here in March thinking, you know, this is a done deal. And I did too, until we looked at it more thoroughly. But I should have never let it come to a vote or decision that day. We should have, you know, let us look at it, and I'm sorry that I did that.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate it. You know, I thank you for that. And I'm not upset about that by any means. You know, we were just wanting to serve this, honestly, we were just wanting to serve this community. And I see it day in and day out, the benefit of it. And I'm constantly told how much of a blessing our service is to so many individuals. And frankly, just the way the business is to continue to grow in order to do that, the way I'm seeing it is that we're needing assistance to reach these people that are, I'm telling you, miles and miles down these thorough roads that we travel. And I see it that we are different than the larger companies that get into a contractual agreement with, say, whatever city. We are serving, you know, people of our community who truly need it. And that's honestly, that's our heart and our desire to be able to do that in greater capacity. And so that's honestly, I'm not trying to be a nuisance to the board. I support you. I honor your position. I truly do. But I feel like I'd be doing the community a service by not coming against anything who's asking for a reconsideration of our request. But I thank you for it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Perhaps he could be directed to the EDA, and they could, there may be programs that they know of that could offer the assistance that he needs. I don't know if you know about the, excuse me, Economic Development Authority? They have an office up here.
I may have a knowledge.
They can probably, I don't know that they can help you, but that would be a place to go to see.
Sure.
Be sure to do that, and he was supposed to be here today, but he couldn't be here, Mr. Gill. He can't be here today. But anyway, and I want to say something else. And Mr. Tipp is on the Leno Whisco Board with me and Mr. Bricky too. But there's money out there for these small businesses, and I'm hoping that maybe you might take advantage of it too. They're even going back and helping pay some things that's already been paid for. They're reimbursing for expenses you already had. And there's money there through that, and Penny Horton, she is the, she's with the EDA. She can help with you too, and Frank Kimber at Leno Whisco. So, but there is money there that can help small businesses, especially this time we're, you know, that we're going through. But get with them, and they can direct you in the right way. You might be surprised. I don't know what's available, but our small businesses in the county can, there is money out there, even paying the rent and stuff like that. There is money to do that with. And even, they said even from last April till now, if they paid stuff and they can get reimbursed for it. But it's COVID relief money. It's there. And so, but think about that. Maybe that'll help you some too.
Sir, thank you. Chairman, I believe also that there's a link on the county website, and then also on the EDA website that has a link to that to be able to help you in that regard. Then if you need help, you can call someone that you know to help you with that, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
But thank you for coming. I always love hearing from you, so we do what we can do. You know, our small business folks are one of the most important things in this county, and we've got to do everything we can. I'm concerned about this minimum wage that's going up, and I've talked to some of the small business people, and guess what they've got to do? They've got to raise the prices. And so I don't know. It's, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think the economy itself should drive the wages, not the government. So anyway, our small business will be struggling with this, especially as it goes more and more. It goes $11 an hour January 1st, then $15 an hour, I think, in 2025 or something. But anyway, it's a concern that we're, the government does what they do sometimes, and we are the government here. So anyway, thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you.
Danny, I think there's a program PPP that you can put in for a forgivable loan, and he may be eligible for that. I don't worry that we are not, but he can check and see. You can do it at...
Well, Ms. Horton at the EDA and John Gillor can direct you, and also Frank Kimber at Leno Whisco. And so they said use those names, and so it's out there. Maybe this is you with that. Again, I'm going to plug his service. I use his service. I live. Sunday evening, I put my trash cans out, 8 o'clock Monday morning, it's coming. So, you know, it's a great service, and it sure is a lot of these would have to go, you know, five or six miles to the convenience center, which is not bad either. But still, y'all have a great service, and I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any fans need to discuss from citizen's press?
I'm over, I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead.
Where we got the list for Mr. Edgerton, is it legal for us to keep that? Can we file that?
We have to file one copy.
You do file one, okay.
These are all just copies. They're all the same?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we will. We'll be sure it gets filed. It has to be filed. All right. Next item is a public hearing on special use permit for a minor auto repair at tax map number S-99866 and 99867-1 in the Fairview community of Scott County. So, Mr. Gilmer, if you're here, then we'll go into the public hearing.
Good morning, board. We ran on a situation where down on Fairview Road, we had a gentleman who wanted to, well, he actually started doing repairs, and we came by, and after discussion, he decided, according to the zoning ordinance, he needed to put in for a special use permit to open a minor repair garage. And he put in the application. We have gone through the planning commission. They voted in favor of recommending it to the board. It's located on Fairview, just, I guess, about a mile down Fairview Road, or the location map. It's right there now. The house and the building are in the floodplain. And he is aware of this because he has to play flood insurance for his house. But there's nothing, since it existed, building, I can't, we can't causing to have any holdback because of the floodplain. It is agricultural residential tenure package he gave you, which means if you look, it is, require a special use permit. There's a definition of the automobile services minor. Restriction for mini-commercial trucks, typically just almost like it used to be a fill-in station, gas station, it used to, small jobs. The surrounding partials were identified and sent registered letters. They didn't, any of those appear at the planning commission. There, he does have an entrance permit from the VDOT people and gives him a route to enter, and on that road, enter and leave commercial entrance. There is a picture of the garage that's down his driveway. And there's the other end, other direction. Anybody have any more questions?
Any comments or questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone wishing to speak during this public hearing on this issue? If not, we'll come out of the public hearing, and we will vote. Any comments here or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
They said make a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipp in second. Any discussion? All fair folks saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Much to carry. So you let Mr. Hall know that this board has approved his special use permit. Next item is another public hearing on special use permit for a convenience store at tax map number S-120A1517 in the Duffield area of Scott County. So, if you don't read your book, please.
Good morning again. Mr. Hurd approached, started working on the store, and I went down and talked to him about, because the store had been closed over two years, it no longer was grandfathered in as a store. So it is an agricultural residential. He put in an application, paid the fees. It's located where 23 and Angler's Way, almost exactly where they meet. It's, believe it or not, the store is not in the floodplain. And it's located right there, right across the bridge, on 23 North, right where you go down to, turn down Angler's Way. Again, it's an agricultural residential, which means it does require a convenience store, requires a special use permit. There is the definition for a convenience store. It doesn't include selling fuel of any kind. It's just normally a convenience store for the neighborhood. The adjoining partials were identified and sent a registered letter, given the opportunity to appear at planning commission. Nobody appeared, and the planning commission did recommend that the board that it be approved. There is an older picture of the front of the store. Mr. Hurd is in the process of redoing the store completely. It really looks good inside. So, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Gilmer on this? Thanks, sir. Are we on the public hearing, and do we have anyone here wishing to speak? If not, we'll come out of the public hearing. We'll need a motion to approve or discuss.
I make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
They said make a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Deere, second. Any discussion? All fair folks saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So you let Mr. Hurd know that he's good to go. Thank you, David. Good job today presenting. Our next item is a joint public hearing with the Virginia Department of Transportation on secondary road six-year plan for 2022, '23, and through 2025, '26, and secondary assisted construction budget for fiscal year 2021, '22. So, Mr. Chris, if you would.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got all my buddies with me.
I see that.
It's always good to have a good help.
Yeah. Hard to come by.
I guess we'll probably do what we're, what our current plan first, and then we'll take any questions and some of the comments we had there. Or we'll be glad to address some too. As you mentioned this previously, the board was giving like a little over a million dollars to add routes to the current six-year plan for Scott County. And by doing that, I think four new routes were added, leaving probably three on the existing list, which that'll be up to the board next year. That'll give you a start. Like the gentleman says, there are any inputs you get throughout the year that Ms. Hood takes, that's something else you can bring into as far as your plan. But we'll kind of go down with the plan currently. I won't get the first three, though we've completed. But we've got two projects underway in Scott County now, Route 702 and Route 703, Sherwood Lane and Robin Hood. Both of those have been under construction. They're still in process. They're both right close together, so they've been working back and across, forth and west, projects, getting, completing those. We have two projects that are coming up on the plan that are fully funded at this time. And that's Newland Hall Road and section of Route 753, the Beeline Road. Don't get that confused with the other section of Beeline. It's the back loop on Beeline, 753 section. Both of those projects are fully funded at this time. We have three projects that will be funded, hopefully, at the transportation board's approval in July. That will be Route 657, Greens Chapel Lane, and Route 681, and as the gentleman mentioned, 681, Gilon Chapel Road. That section of the road is from Route 682 to Route 787. And the estimate on that one was $300,000. That come from the original, like I say, there's probably no one here that, when that one was put on. And that's the section we've given to take, and it's one mile. The next project that will be fully funded in July will be Route 701, Jane Hill Circle. I think that's in Marshall's area. We're getting a lot of calls about that one. And the next one on the plan is not actually a six-year plan project. It's Route 619. It's what we call a flat project. It's a federal land project, and the board agreed this year to take partial funding to make the match, the federal match, where we can do about two-mile road on top of High Knob, 619, from the Wise County line back into Scott County. That one will be federally, federal funded, and the county elected to do a partial match on that before that project will be funded. Looks like next year. So that was a big plus for the county, getting part of that 619 for the recreational area. And hopefully, the federal will work with us, and that can continue on, hopefully. The next project is a six-year plan project. It's Route 689, Anne Good Road and Cooper Road, I'm sorry. And that one looks like funding in 22, '23. Second phase of Anne Good is also funded 22, '23. That's Route 689. Then we move back down into the Duffield area, Route 856, Spurlock Hall off of Route 23, 22, '23 funding. Orton Summit Road, Route 654, that's moving on out to Out Year funding. Route 693, Eaton Hill Road. These I'm going to mention now will be Out Year funding. There'll be 24, 25, 26. Route 660, Holby Creek Road. Route 641, Turkey Leg. Route 697, Fowles Branch. Chestnut Ridge. Pippin Lane. I don't have the route on those, just the name, sorry. Then we have Phalen Hollow Lane. We was able to put a little bit of funding into the county rural additions. That's if a road's not currently in the system. Those funds are few and far between, kind of like the way our six-year plan was before. We currently have like $14,000 in that. And that won't really get a lot started, but we can see on out those Out Years, very limited funding going in for the new additions. These will be the list of the new routes that will be going on to the plan for this year. Be Route 650, Finn Castle Road. Part of that road is paved, you know, and there's a section on it by the park, it's not. We're going to kind of hook all that and run by the back of the swimming pool together. Route 821, Querrel Run Lane. That's got a lot of traffic count on it. And River Bluff Road, Route 659, we had to break that down into some phases. So this will be Phase Two of that section of Route 659. I know he's not here, but the ex-sheriff used to mention that every time he made a report to me when we were here, so I'm sure he'll be glad to hear that. Then the last one was added was the Route 624 section of the... Then the last one was added was the Route 624 section of the Beeline Road. And that's the current six-year plan that we have.
Can we get a updated copy of that? On Eaton Hill, is that the portion next to Macmurray Hollow on Eaton Hill Road? Do you remember where the steep grade is when up the hill?
It's from intersection of 858 to the intersection of 696 that goes up that hill. I'm pretty sure that'll catch it. We caught, we went from intersection to intersection, but the very beginning of Eaton Hill's got a little bit of pavement. You know, when you start up the top, it's gravel. So this should cover from the intersection of Route 858 to the intersection of 696. What part to T.
So is that on the Macmurray Hollow side? Do you remember?
I can't remember, Mark. It's been a day or two since I've been in there.
I'll be able to look. We got a updated list, I'll look at that.
Right.
Mr. Tipton, the list is on your CD.
I'm sorry?
The list is on your CD, in your packet.
Thank you.
I've got some more activities up to me today. Any questions, attorney notes?
You know, you need to keep this list and when printed off, you can, you can get it, but that way for reference, you can see what's going on. People ask you, going straight to looking at it. All those people are all going to know. And I keep my, the list every year, keep it in. So this one I'll update and I'll keep that too, so it's good. So when do you think these right here will be exhausted, pretty much?
Well, those 22 active projects on that plan and the way the funding comes in, we usually average two to three per year. You know, it's of course a plan, but divide that by six, you're looking at, you know, it's three to four.
These were, these were the ones that were part of the 34 that was on the list?
Yes, all but the last four.
The last four, only added last month.
Yes.
Top of the list, it shows the year they're going to be implementing. You look at it, you see when it's the top of it, how much is funded and the, the year that it's to be implemented.
It's very fortunate to get those 34, you know, and hopefully the funding will still keep coming in.
And we can, we can continue to add every year.
Yes. That's our hope and plan. You know, we were fortunate, Scott County and Lee County are two counties in our residency that have the most unpaid roads. So that's where the funds are going. The other two counties, they don't receive hardly any funding for their six-year plan, very minimal. But that's a need. Like you said, we're close to 300 miles in Scott County, about 280 some unpaid roads. And that's a long road.
Long road. I've asked a question about one, about Blue Bell Drive, and I have not gotten an answer yet. It's over on East Corter Valley. It's already paved. It's wide enough, you know, for traffic, you know, they've, they've meet, they pass and so forth. It's wider than a lot of the rustic roads that you guys are doing. And I know there's been initiative to get that taken into the VDOT for many years ago. And so they've gotten all the drainage, they've got all that worked out. It's already paved. When the snows come in the wintertime, a scraper passes by, they don't go down that, that, you know, that, that drive. I mean, it's actually a street. They call it a private drive, but, but it's, it's paved, so it just gets bypassed.
So that's, unfortunately, that's the one I was talking about, our new additions. We get like 3,000 dollars a year going into them funds. Even though the, the road has improvements, it would have to meet VDOT specifications. That would be the issue.
Well, I think, well, I, I go on some roads now that, I could, you know, for example, the old Hilton's Road and paved that road, you have to stop on that road and get off on the driveway if you meet someone. So, you know, the traffic, the speed has picked up on that road and so I'm surprised, you know, somebody's not really, so it's really not wide enough to pass and it's, it's a, it's a road. This drive is actually wider than that, so, and it's paved. So I'm not sure what specifications you might be talking about.
It has to do a lot with the drainage and currently now you have to have a 40-foot right-of-way for any new roads where we won't run into the same situation, like you say, with Hilton's. It requires a 40-foot right-of-way for any new addition, complete drainage. There are a lot that has to be, I mean, it takes money to get it to where it needs to be, even though it may not be up to standard with some of our other roads. If you see what I'm saying, when, when you take one in, it has to be basically perfect or a fund set aside to make it that way. In fact, I hope that answers the question. Wade's with me here today and I'll, you know, we'll be glad to go. I've been out to the area, I'm not been up on the hill.
Yeah, I appreciate it, somebody to go out, you know, and look at that.
And just to interject, Joey Mullins can check on that as well. There's a, there's a long list of criteria for a road to get accepted into VDOT system and things that you don't even think about that go beyond just the visual of it. But he could probably give you a lot more detail and probably tell you why or what's missing for that road to be taken in. But, but there are a lot of things you don't see with elevation, access, grades, things like that beyond just drainage and stuff. So sometimes it does get confusing because there, there are a lot that goes into it. But I can have Joey see if we could put maybe a sheet together or something or, or a contact point that you can get in there that would spell everything out, you know, as these developers come in and do the roads, that they, that they meet these criteria.
That probably gets, for all the, I had a question the other day about getting one added, you know, but it's far from being, I'm sure, up to standards, I guess, or what, just a narrow, narrow road, there's a lot of houses on it, but it is a narrow, narrow road. The 40-foot right-of-way, that, the guy that I talked to, he didn't realize that, you know, and I, I didn't either. That's a, that'd be a big swamp, you'd have to have cooperation from several people on that.
Can't be any obstacles on that, any buildings, any fences?
If we could all get a list of that, that would be, that'd be good.
Darrell's got one over in Weber City and that's one of the hangups on that is obtaining the right-of-way back. Any other questions about the plan?
We're going to public hearing in a sec if I may speak on it, but anything else from VDOT folks?
I did, lady mentioned the bridge. We, I did text our bridge people while we were sitting there trying to get a little bit of an update. Those bridges are inspected every two years unless they determine there's a factor, you know, maybe the weight limit's going down. And then they're inspected at least every year to six months, depending on the condition. And what was the name of the road again?
Mineral Hill Lane. It's over Little Moss and Creek. And the weight limit went down from 27 tons to 19 tons. And there were two axle, one, one axle truck and a double axle truck. And now it's just any truck, 19 ton.
Is that the one lane bridge it's kind of set on a little? I'm going to verify it, but there's a possibility that one may be up for replacement.
Appreciate it, because it's, it's really crumbling. The surface is crumbled and you can see the wood and from the pictures, if you want to look at it, you can see.
I was over there during the flood. I think they had a lot of debris that was lodged under it and...
And it flooded again when we had the three inches of rain. Trees had stopped underneath the bridge and it probably just...
If you can, if you can give Mr. Belcher your name and number, we'll get back with you. But I'm quite sure it's, it's possibly up for replacement.
Oh, thank you.
We'll verify that and let you know.
And you can have your photos back. I'll keep the copies.
Oh, you can keep them. That's fine.
Sure.
Just to make sure this is...
I think it's just...
Okay. It's always good to come over.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
Thank you all.
If you have any pavement left over from 753, you might come down at least past the second house from 638 on 624.
We'll spend every bit of that.
You never know.
Exactly. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Jack, you were wanting to move forward. I was going to go ahead and ask you that. On Little Duck, I asked at the last meeting, you know, over toward almost Russell County line, there is a bad dip right there. There's a culvert that's either collapsed or I, I forgot about it again, I hit it again yesterday and it about threw me through the roof. There, there, there at least needs to be something warning people that that's there, but it, it, it needs to be fixed. And there, it's, it's getting, it seems like it's worse, I guess, all this rain. And there's actually another one. And there might've been some confusion. They did put a barrel, you know, of course it's gone now. At Jimmy McConnell's farm, where he tried, it's, it's right there at the bank, washed off and it was washed under the road and the, on the other side of the road, it fell out. And there's a dip there too, but it's not as bad as the one over at the other. Like I say, it's almost to the Russell County line. And you're, you can sort of see it when you're coming toward Nicholsville. When you're going that way, it looks level when you hit that thing and it's bad. You'll, you'll know it when you hit it.
There's a pothole too, I noticed, and obviously it was hard to see through, but in Duff Field, near Chubbies.
At the bridge, I saw that.
Did you notice that? It's a pretty good size and there were some on 58 on Powell Mountain. I haven't been up there in the last few days, but there were some on that road too.
They're actually, they're going to be paving Powell Mountain from the top at the Lee County line towards Scott County, so that's, you're probably, she's probably talking about that dip there that we have.
But the bridge, one where the pothole is there?
Right, right there in Duff Field.
I'll get that one Sunday.
Yeah.
Let's make stuff on you.
It does.
They were talking to bridge people about that and they'll have to seal that one.
Correct. Thank you.
Appreciate all the, all the research and you've already done.
We're, yeah, we're trying. We're making a big effort this year to get out and get a lot of what, what hasn't been touched in a while and Jackie and we picking them off the list. As the money goes, we're getting as much as we can. I think we made a big dent with the stone, like I said, the gravel we've been putting down. Lot to go, you know, by no means, but this year we really got to kick a lot of it that's been sitting on our to-do list out there. So keep going and encourage if, if anyone, you know, if you get complaints, encourage them to do the 1-800 number because that, that immediately generates a work order that feeds right into the area headquarters where that's located. And they're working on weekly plans and, you know, two and three weeks out. So as they get those in, they can, you know, group them together if there's a particular area that has a lot of potholes or something like that and they can hit that at a time. So we, we try and encourage that as well because it really helps our areas to maintain their work plan too.
There's one thing I wanted to compliment. Those guys doing the mow at Long 72, it's the best they've ever done. And the ones in the past that just go so fast, they mash them down about as much as they mowed it, next day stand right back up. But they, I mean, they've really, really done a good job, one of the best I've ever seen them do. But I guess they're going slow enough to where the blades are really getting at it. So those in the past that go too fast and like I said, two or three days, it was, you know, just standing right back up and not mowed, but it laid up really a good job with that.
They did a fantastic job in front of my house, Dr. Terry.
I went up through that.
I went down through Fort Quack.
Yeah. And Jackie, what a compliment you all for getting out there too on Highway 58, where Wadlow Gap Road is, starting up Highway 58 all the way to almost Hilton's. Y'all did a lot of patchwork, but there was a real bad place there when you first turned up the road, if you remember. And a lot of washout. But I'm sure you guys are still, have you been able to use the machines that you talked about? You talked about some machines.
Herbage Pro, I guess you're talking about. Yes, they're, they're a big hit in the headquarters. Lot of time saving.
I'm surprised I lead the job at that.
It is.
I'm not, I'm not.
Paul brought that suggestion to us from Northern Virginia, so we'll give him the hat boys.
Maybe a raise with it.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming.
Down here on 23, it'll be complete.
I don't have any idea. That's in our construction room. You know, they've had a few little issues there with that slide coming out and they're back and forth on that, but we're hoping soon, very soon.
That slide thing is one reason why I push hard trying to get it bypassed. If we ever have an issue with our work, we lose Route 23 for ever how many, how long it would be.
Yes.
I mean, we're troubled.
I agree.
Bypass it. I know it's not, it's out of your eyes, but I really thought it'd be done back a few years ago, but it did get funded. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak about the VDOT issues? Secure plan. If not, we'll come out of the public hearing and we'll need a motion to approve the plan that's presented to you. Do we have a motion?
I can motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? I'll prepare, I'll say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is a resolution that you should have on your, on your computer and have a chance to look at it. And Mr. Sarn, you want just briefly discussing? We have the front of us, but we're probably going to have a republic on.
Give me a minute to pull it back up. You can see on the sketch that's on your tablet, let us the third page down, they are wanting to abandon one section of the road where the bridge was replaced and add the additional section in to the six-year plan. And they're both four tenths of a mile, it looks like. On page two, it actually describes the abandonment of Route 852 and the description and then that addition of the same, same right there in the area. But on the map, it shows better what they're talking about doing. So it's just the resolution for highway system changes and it's because of the construction of the project 0852-084-241.
That's 400ths of a mile instead of four tenths.
Okay.
Didn't mean to correct John, but in that way.
Well, it's correct.
Anyway, you have a picture of, you have the resolution before you and I think we need to discuss a lot about me to do this. So anyway, you have copied the resolution. All I'm saying is that, that we, it's a resolution to approve this, this action by VDOT. So with that, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Mr. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? I'll prepare, I'll say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right, next item is Mr. Hurd is here from the school system, so he's Hurd, if you would.
Good morning.
Good morning. How is everyone?
Good. The reason I'm here today, I assist on yearly basis in terms of a $4 million, $4 million line of credit for the school operating budget. We ask that the effective date be July 1st of this current year to extend through June 30th, 2022. As at the treasurer's office seek the appropriate bid in order to be able to receive this. Again, the whole purpose of this line of credit is to bridge the gap between revenues, between the time that the county receives their funds, tax revenue funds, so that we can pay our bills throughout the summer.
Pretty important.
Pretty important. And this is something we've been doing for long before I've ever become superintendent. This is my 10th year or something. I should go with consideration of that.
It is something we've always done, so it helps them through to get into the new tax season coming in. So, so we've always done and anyway, any discussion before we do the vote. All right. Not one to entertain a motion to approve this line of credit for the school system, $4 million.
I'll move.
I'll move.
All right. Mr. Dear made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? I'm saying aye. Aye, opposed, the motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Ready for school year then, I guess, aren't you?
Well, it's, it's been a very challenging year to say the least and to realize that we're already the first part of May. It's, time has flown.
I met with a guy that was, is one of the potential run for governor and he was really complimenting Scott County schools. He said that some of them up in his area are not operating. And he really complimented just part of the state, you know, being in operation the way they are. So he was really speaking highly of what y'all are doing.
Thank you. We appreciate that. You know, a lot of divisions within Region 7 have been, have been in session since the first day and have people in. Unlike some of the larger school divisions, Eastern, Northern, Central Virginia, they have not. They've just now started coming back in person.
He's speaking highly of it. He knew what he's talking about. I talked to him just briefly. He was, he's speaking highly of what y'all are doing.
We've had, had to call it off for a few weeks at times whenever the numbers started to spike. And then we looked at individual schools, you know, just kind of pilots here and there. We're making it through.
You are.
Do want to say that, can share this with you. We, you know, we have a large, large number of folks that work for the school division. Last count I had, we had about 80% took advantage of the vaccine. So that's good, very good. And last week, we had four sites, Gate City, Career Technical, Rockcove, and Twin Springs, where vaccines were offered to those who wanted 16 years of age and older, or students. So hopefully they did take advantage of it. Of course, it was optional. They had that opportunity, but at least it was there. We'll get through this. But the plan for the upcoming years will be on a regular schedule, five days a week. Regular time. Regular time.
Mr. Burton, did you get your sewer line in on the sports complex?
Well, sir, to make a long story short, we have had an issue getting our new pump station in because of some of the changes. And they are installing it today. The opening of the sports complex, you know, first home baseball game as well. The first soccer match was going to be played there yesterday, but I guess we could. I don't say it's a blessing because we did get needed rain. But it did delay that so that we could actually turn the water on instead of using our portalets for the time being. But it is in today. It is the original size that was specked out for the complex. So the larger was taken off the table with, with the other entities. So everything's progressing very nicely in that regard. I just hope they didn't tell me a story and we had to delay it a little longer. I think it was being shipped from New York, so. So hopefully we'll have that in place this week. And by the time we do have our first baseball game, which is scheduled next Friday.
We have like a tent out there.
We will, we will host it there at the sports complex. We don't have any stadium seats, so bring long chairs. You can sit wherever you want to.
That's tomorrow or Friday week?
Friday week, May the 14th. So.
Let me ask you, are you going to have a ribbon cut or anything? I think it would be, you know, I mean, it's such a big deal, you know, for the county.
We will, we will have, we will have those activities going on on that day yesterday. First pitch, whatever you want to call it. Can't take your soccer ball, but might be able to throw a baseball. Used to, I've used to throw quite a few of them, but I'm about afraid now. It's been a while.
I believe you could do it.
I don't get many caught. Well, this was the first last week about air conditioning in the gymnasiums. Rockcove High School, Rockcove Intermedia, and Gate City High School. So that's, that's a concern. I have, you know, experienced like at Rockcove, some of their events, I have gone to like their graduations and the heat is terrible in their gymnasium.
Keep in mind, that's a very large area as well as the size of the unit it's going to take to do, to do just that.
Yeah, I think it should be.
I think any air conditioner or none of the gyms.
None of the, none of the older gyms, the new additions. One of Duff Field Primary, what Twin Springs does. Gate City Middle School does not. Gate City High School, those gymnasiums neither does Twin Springs or Rockcove. They have the exhaust stand, but they do very little in terms of pulling the hot air out. Of course, the higher you go up in the stands, the warmer it's going to be.
All right. Appreciate you.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next item is our commissioner of revenue, Mr. David Dockery is here. So Mr. Dockery, do it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here today to talk about the senior citizen and disabled discount that we provide the citizens of Scott County. And I came before the board last time in 2016 to get it increased $25 from $150 to $175. And I'm asking now to get it increased from $175 to $200, which is a $25 increase. And also would like to change the requirements of the income from $30,000 to $35,000. Assets from $90,000 to $95,000. And according to my calculation, that's going to be roughly around $29,480 increase. We, it typically stays about the same. Right now we have 2,938 people who received the real estate exemption. We have 89 people who received the exemption because on personal property, their single wife is their primary residence. So that's a total of 3,027 discounts. But I calculated it and by doing an increase of $25 to make the discount $200 would be roughly, like I said, $29,480. And it's been five years. I feel like an increase is justified at this time.
This would affect the disabled?
And the senior citizen.
How old do you have to be to be a senior citizen?
You have to be 65 or permanent social security disability. And we do require proof if they are disabled and they receive social security benefits. We do ask for proof of that. The total stays about the same because we, we gain a few, but we also lose a few. So right now the total is 3,027, which will stay about the same.
And the total cost of the county would be how much?
It's going to be, I've calculated roughly at $29,480.
What was it in 2016 with one pitch to $175?
Yes. Times are hard and, you know, everybody's struggling. And $25 doesn't seem like a lot to some, but for those people that are on fixed income, it, it means the world to them. So I feel like it's very important that we do increase that.
It'd be real estate, not the corrected.
It would be real estate and then, like I said, we have 89 people who receive it on personal property. That's because their primary residence is a single lot mobile home. And let me tell you, the first people, it amazes me every year that come in and pay their taxes are the elderly people on social security that gets the discount. If everybody would make it a priority like they do, then we wouldn't have a problem.
Is this just for one year? Where does it go?
Well, this, I came last year or five years ago. So usually typically we come every four to five years. So this would be, yeah, so this will last four or five years.
This is our ordinance.
Yes, it is.
Advertise to amend the ordinance.
So this, this has nothing to do with the veterans?
No, veterans are, it's a totally different. They have their own ordinance and.
So we didn't authorize it to advertise if we approved a new list, we didn't authorize you to advertise it, afraid to have a public hearing.
Yeah. Advertise to have a public hearing and then you would approve the ordinance.
Any comments for commissioner of revenue? So we're going to, we're going to decrease what they have to pay or they're going to have to pay $25 more?
No, the current discount per resident is $175. I want to increase that to $200.
So they'd have to pay $25 more?
No.
Okay. All right. I got you. All right.
Right. Yes. Yeah, they would get $200 off of their tax bill.
How did they get that discount? I mean, is it just figured in?
They fill out an application and then yearly on our computer program, we have a place that we enter those discounts. And if they sign it in time, which May 1st is the deadline, then it is already taken off of their tax ticket when they receive it in the fall. But if it is their first time signing it, then we will allow them to sign it right at the tall tax deadline. And most of them are really good about, you know, coming in. They have to sign up yearly because things can change, you know. So we ask that they do that yearly.
That is happening as we speak, the minimum wage is going up, prices are increasing, but these people on fixed income is not. I don't know why they don't consider that because there's people now that's, you know, that's really going to struggle with this because the price increases. So I think we can help them some way. I know this, this $29,000, you know, is a pretty good chunk for the county to absorb. But still, this is taking care of those that has put in to pay their dues.
And this is pretty much what the county's done for quite a while.
Yeah, it's just wigged down in $25 increments throughout the period.
You said the amount really didn't change that much.
It doesn't because, like I said, you know, we, we will gain a few that apply. But then we also lose a few because, you know, people, you know, will pass away or, you know. So it usually stays around the same.
All right. Any comments or questions for Mr. Dockery? If there's no comments or questions, I entertain a motion to authorize our county attorney to advertise for this order. So do we have a motion to authorize her to do that? If you want to do it now, this, I guess we did this or say we want to do it. So.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Authorize her to do it. Now you're, and then end the motion, we can work.
You're not committing to doing it, to have the public hearing.
Okay. All right. I'm with you. All right. Just a public hearing. All right. So we're not making a decision today of authorize her to advertise. All right. I'm with you. Okay. We have, you made a motion, Mr. Tipton. You made a motion to authorize our county attorney to advertise for this order, this public hearing. So you second. Mr. Dear second. I'm saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. The public hearing will be in our June meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Summit, and all the county residents. I appreciate that, Dave. All right. Thank you. You all have a good life.
Our next item is Thomas Village Community Center. So I think we have a couple of folks. I believe I've seen you all somewhere before.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here. Property continues to be well maintained at the community center. Everything's in good working order. Of course, what's been done, it's been very limited for obvious reasons over the past year. City C guidelines, government guidelines, we followed your instructions and that was laid down, what we've done with the building. We'll continue to do so. So we're acting, that's good, we're in good place.
Yeah, I'm proud of what y'all are doing with that. And so, but I'm glad you're there and it's making, could use that.
Really, it's, it's been used and we're hoping that, of course, my part of it's been the Duff Field Jam, as y'all are all aware. I was hoping that I might get enough people here to fire, refire that thing up and start again. And I sent, had a query sent out to all the jammers on the email and unfortunately I didn't get enough responses to warrant, I think, starting it back. I think everybody, as y'all know, the great majority of the folks who attended that event are elderly people. They just are afraid to come out. And until this thing settles down a little bit more, I don't think that we would really be ahead of the game to start early. So hopefully in the next month or two, we're going to, I'm going to query it again. Hopefully we can get, get back to providing that event for the folks of that area because it was well received over the last several years. And I'm confident we can get it going again.
Good. I think it's $1, is it? You got $1? I think the last time, I believe I paid the forty. Give it to Ms. Harn.
We appreciate you. We appreciate it. Appreciate all y'all do for us.
We'll make the vote here in a second, but yeah.
I don't know about some of the new mayor board members here, but it's been a great thing for our area. And it's been a great thing for the county because that building has been salvaged. So anyway, thank y'all so much. I guess Sean, Sean, the shield, the shield called in to sign or whatever.
We just went on in.
All right. We need a motion to approve this lease agreement with three bells, United Methodist Church.
I made the motion.
All right. Mr. Dear made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's proven second. I'm saying aye. Aye, opposed. So sign the paper. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Doesn't have to be no cross.
All right.
Did y'all want to take a break or do you want to go on? Take a break. Let's take a bathroom.